And then I will start with the item two. Congratulations to the five.
The United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I will start with item two if you don't mind, the community center. And I handed out the ILA that we've entered into with the public facilities district and the draft p- uh, request for proposals that Mr. Bond has been working on. Uh, I went to the, and so there really isn't any action tonight. You can take these documents home, it isn't, I would say by the end of the week. We would like to get this on the street. I think it still needs legal review and I promised the public facilities district, I would get a copy to them for their review. Uh, what happened at the public, I'm glad I was at the public facilities district meeting last night, uh, cause there was, um, one, uh, I gave them an update. Uh, the port was there, um, with a couple of commissioners. I might have observed an open public meetings act violation, but that's not my concern. And, uh, they, at the end of the meeting though, they got into a discussion, our step one, and that's why I gave, passed this ILA out, um, calls for, um, find it here. The feasibility study. And we've determined that per S H W, I, we're gonna have a feasibility study at some point once we know what the uses are, the income and the expenses are. But ours is, you know, from fiscal standpoint, uh, this is between, this, this feasibility study is between the public facilities district and the department of commerce. And because of the failure of one of these facilities, I think it was in Lenachey, uh, years back, there, there's, uh, some additional scrutiny that are going into these types of agreements. So they have reached out to commerce, they haven't gotten an indication yet from commerce as to when their review will be done and, um, which makes me a little bit nervous. So what I discussed with them last night, we plan to issue this RFP, go through the selection process, let the consultants know that we won't enter into a contract until the review is done by commerce. Because otherwise, the public facilities district does not have the means to pay for these activities and we would be stuck holding the bag. That is what we want to do. So, um, that gives you a little bit of time. And then the other, uh, interesting piece that I did share with them, I have concerns if commerce delays us three, six, hopefully not nine months, uh, whatever that delay is, um, we have an agreement that has timelines in it and their heads were all nodding in agreement, I said, we need any additional time if we get delayed and they agreed. And it was Darren, the chair, uh, shared with me, we were the rated number one project and, um, we don't have anything to be concerned about. They are funding us to the level of $12 million and, uh, you know, whatever the process needs to be, that's what it will be. And, uh, so that, that's kind of my update. Nick, do you want to talk about?
I was just gonna clarify, it's an RFQ, not an RFP, so that's architectural services that we're procuring. Um, but yeah, other than that, I think you've, you've covered it. I, I think that the department of commerce review is likely to be, uh, take more time than, than our selection process. We may wanna, we may wanna extend the window for issuing the RFQ, uh, or if we need to continue to refine it, I think we probably have a little bit of time. But we, we can still move forward with the consultant selection, it just made it be that they're in limbo for a matter of months while we get the green light to go ahead with that contract.
Good point.
What question you reference in the legal review?
Our attorney hasn't seen this yet.
Which, the document that's already been signed?
No.
Or the scope?
The one executed?
Okay, just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Yeah, the scope has not been, uh, we have, Senator, we've, as you know, we've got a brand new attorney and we didn't wanna have the attorney who was leading, uh, do this body work. So, uh, as Nick is pointing out, we, we may even just choose to delay the issuance of this, but we've got the body work done and, uh, that's what I know at this time. Now we'll, there's Jay, my apologies to the council, that's okay.
Only half the council.
You should be on time next time, Jay.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind so much if it wasn't right there on a piece of paper.
Well, I have that same issue and I was walking in just a few minutes before you, so they're gonna take advantage of beating you by a minute or two.
And so for everybody but John, uh, the surfaces are in, but they won't be ready cause Steve's, um, taking out the packaging and the model software on next Friday.
Okay.
Um, so at 31st on, you can reach out, um, to Steve. And if you want any training, uh, I guess, we were thinking maybe if you want, Steve, you guys wanna do that, Steve would do it as a group, maybe before council, maybe do a six o'clock start time, you guys are all rolling about a quarter after. We just talked about the community center, I'll brief you on that later, Jay, if you don't mind.
No.
And, uh, spring and fall cleanup. So, Mr. Garcia, you wanna, you've got some pictures in here and?
Yes, so in your package, we have a presentation, a PowerPoint, uh, that I asked our operations manager to put together. But before we get into the actual PowerPoint, uh, really what we're looking for at this time, staff's just looking for some direction of how we amend this current program. In the slideshow, you'll see that we've got some pros and cons. But as you know, this program has grown, is very successful, but it's, as the city has grown, picked up quite a bit of land mass. In general, uh, in 2008, we could do this entire project in three days with full-time staff. Now it takes a full week and a half with full-time staff. And so that's all hands on deck for that time period and, and so we just wanna look at some of the pros and cons. And again, we're just looking for some suggestions, direction. So I'll go over the slides very quickly. So we tried to see, you know, when this was actually established, um, we couldn't find any kind of a resolution or ordinance. Looks like it started about 1980. In 1980, our population was just under 5,000 and we were about 2.7 square miles in area. In 2019, we're now under 15,000 and we've, uh, we're up at, you know, 11 square miles. So that's kind of a quick history on some of the pros. Um, you know, it's definitely a means for the elderly or the handicapped to get rid of bulk goods, citizens in general. It's a great means for property owners and renters to dispose of landscaping and trash. And it just helps with the general aesthetics of the community. We know that, we know it's a good program. Some of the cons have just been, you know, we've got over the last three years, total costs for benefits and wages have almost doubled. Shop personnel are unavailable for that timeframe, uh, cause we're working concurrently with waste management as we go through. Uh, the footprint has increased, uh, and, um, we're looking at future development as well. We've got Stetson and apartments and there's a lot of growth, so I think we really need to, before we get this next big push of residential, we need to really address how we're gonna proceed with this or we'll be overwhelmed. One of the, what really brought this to the forefront was, as we've done this program, it's interesting that in one of the cons, that we receive a number of rude calls, because it has to do with kind of expectation. And so you'll see in some of these slides where there are two main, for those not familiar with the project, there are two main ways to get rid of things. You come down and get a ticket for an appliance, or you pick it up, or you're addressed in the flyer to do a four by four by four, or four by six by four pile. And so what we did is not that, and it's when we go buy those piles, we used to pick them up and now if we don't have a backhoe with us, which we do now, sometimes we'll pick them up, other times we're just not able. But if we were to not pick up a pile, then we get calls from those individuals complaining, even though it's clear, clear on the documentation. So, um, we're just really, I think there's a, I think what we have to do to move forward before the city gets larger is, you know, our, our message, expectations, if we gotta just revisit all that. You know, items that aren't contained are very problematic. People have just done things, you know, literally in the gutter and then we're spending more time cleaning things up. So, um, you know, we talked about the benefits and wages, you know, they've gone considerably in 2016, Tony was able to pull up about 2.3 million in benefit, or 2.12,300, sorry. And now that's about 22, so it's not doubled, but it's getting close to that. And, you know, we, we've looked at some alternatives. One is just to do spring only, other ones, we could only do the bulk items. You know, there's just all sorts of options. This is really, this isn't a, we're done with the program, this is how do we prepare for the next, you know, 10 years of the program? What can we do strategically to, to make it better for the public works crew, making sure we're responsive, make sure we're managing expectation? And that's probably what, this is the biggest message is how do we manage expectation?
I think one of the things we've discovered too is, we've been doing this program for a number of years, but it's not codified, we don't, there isn't any authority to do it. So I think that's probably the first step is, I, I guess, properly establishing the program and defining it and what it is we should be and should be picking up, communicating that better to, to, you know, our citizens, um, you know, what is, we're, I mean, we're getting piles of construction debris, um, we, I don't think we should be traveling with tenure dump trucks and heavy equipment on spring cleanup day around the city, that's why this, it's just, it's gotten, gotten unmanageable. And it, and in fact, in public works, it's much more popular in the spring than it is in the fall. We're traveling the same route. I think it's logical to have a spring, one of these events. It used to be three days, now it's turned into a week and a half of public works time.
I'm, I'm sorry to have come in late, but do we charge for any of this?
We only charge for the appliance items that comes out in the flyer, so if you've got an old refrigerator, it's nominal, because the real.
Because maybe that would eliminate some of.
Can I give just a bit of history to it next week? How this program originated was in negotiations with, then Bramare, uh, that was our garbage collection system that we had in Fort Archer. And as part of the contract we negotiated at that time, we negotiated free cleanup for the citizens' spring and fall. It was never originally intended that it was gonna be done primarily by our staff. It was Bramare going around collecting wood, collecting the additional stuff for no extra charge. It's evolved because it's been so popular and, um, that we've had staff in our own equipment running around to help with Bramare because things would get much greater than what could fit into their regular garbage truck. So that's how it kind of evolved. The fact that it was never codified was, originally was never expected to be city staff.
It's evolved on its own.
Well, you know, we're, I guess we're suffering the, the ills of success because, clearly it's pretty popular in the community. We've had this as an ongoing issue for years with the cleanup that people take advantage of. Now, for a while, we had a real problem with people outside of the city bringing their stuff to their friends' home in the city and we were responsible at that point to clean that up. So we, we have in the past at least, through newspaper and others notifying that, you know, it's intended for the folks inside of the city and not to be a sub kid stack benefit. So that's kind of how it got started and it was, it was after 83 that it got started cause I didn't come into existence on the council until 83, so.
So there's another issue that came up, I think it was last year for the first time. It may have been in the fall cleanup, but we got sideways with the expectation again. There was some confusion with waste management and they're picking up, people were putting out their recycle bins and garbage, you know, thinking that they need to put that out at the same time and waste management then didn't come pick it up. So then there was a bunch of calls to waste management saying, hey, why didn't you pick up my container, my cart? Well, this isn't your week. There was just, became this kind of confusion of, well, what does waste management do? Well, they're not really doing anything anymore. They're independent and we're just doing our thing. So that was kind of a new wrinkle that we got a lot of calls on last year, I think.
In cases like that, and thank you for the pictures, cause these are horrifying, but in cases where there are items that were not paid for or that don't qualify, did staff pick them up anyway?
There have been times.
Or do we leave them behind?
It's been hit or miss, for the most part, they try to pick them up, but when there's, when there's just a clear abuse, they've not picked it up, but then we proceed.
Oh, and then set on the side of the road too. The other, and there's definite benefit because we're not seeing, you know, sofas sitting out in yards and, and white goods or dump.
That's not my neighborhood.
Yeah, like big dump, Mount Mark's neighborhood. You know, we're, there's, there's definite benefit, but I think we really need to, to set clear expectations. We need to probably, uh, you know, have a resolution that spells out what we're gonna do and what we're, you know, what this program. So I think there, there's some work to do and I think we need to communicate better. Once again, it's about communication, uh, and, uh, I don't, I, you know.
I could easily support doing it once a year. I, I could do that.
My only comment is if we get this kind of stuff twice a year, is it just gonna mean the once a year is gonna be twice as bad?
Right.
But I don't think we should, that's why we got the set expectation.
Oh, I appreciate what you're saying, we should or should not do, but my point is, is that there's this much stuff that gets accumulated in the city that this program has helped keep our city a little bit cleaner. And, I mean, that was the original intent behind that whole thing initially was, there are folks that do not have the ability, whether it be financial or equipment, to take a load of stuff to the, to the dump. And this was a method to try to address some of that.
Jay?
So in, in the, uh, information, uh, it says Auburn Federal Way. So what are their, how are they similar or what do they do?
They, they, we reached out, we asked, and they weren't, they were probably less similar than alike. They were just the only other programs that waste management even knew of that did something like this. They, they, like I said, they were more dissimilar than similar.
So is there, I'm here, Senator, John, you're kind of advocating keep it twice a year and?
I can, I can support either. It becomes, and it, where the issues come with me, on the pros side, just to say, I know I don't have a truck and it's easy for me if I have things to take to the dump. It's not that much and I can put them out and know they're gonna be picked up. I also appreciate the value of the time of our employees that are doing this and realizing that because they're doing this, they're not doing other city work. So I believe that it would be helpful to me to have a value and I realize that there's some numbers in here. And do we ask for a nominal fee if they're, you know, want things picked up? It's, it also reminds me a little bit of the Christmas decorations. We can drive all over and maybe see them or maybe not. And what we're expecting public works now is to drive all through the city to find these accumulation of piles to pick up. And maybe it's a situation where we take the administration a little bit further and have people call and say, I do have items for you to pick up, so that public works has specific addresses they know they're going to. I mean, there are some ways that I think we may be able to modify it a bit.
I think typically, correct me if I'm wrong, we're, we're just following the garbage trucks and their routes and their days, so.
And that's why it's giving you a week, basically a week and a half, cause we're, we're trailing the garbage truck.
The one thing that was suggested in some of the information I received was splitting the city and.
Into.
And doing one, one week and the other, the other week, if that would help with, you know, staffing or spread it out with a week in between, whatever works. So then personally, I think that would be acceptable. It still would accomplish what we're trying to do and it would relieve some pressure on public works to try to get it all done in a week.
So how about a scenario where, would, would waste management pick up an additional garbage bag and?
No, that's, that's been part of the problem too.
That's part of the problem is what, what Bramare did, waste management doesn't do for us.
Well.
And that's.
Let's go back to our contract with, with waste management to see what is their obligated to do, because we didn't specify when we negotiated the contract that you shall pick up one bag, two cans, whatever. We just said during that cleanup week, generally it takes a week for them to go through the entire city at that point, um, you'll just pick up, not charge for this extra stuff. And it's evolved to where they physically can't put it in the truck and that's where we've started to follow around with the trucks with the backhoe so we could lift the bigger piles and stuff in.
No, we started also, so you, you prepay for the appliances.
Yeah.
And so that's, so that's reported and we know, we do get the information from the clerk's office, so we know where these appliances are. It's, and quite honestly, you know, that's much more manageable, cause we know that we're going to pick up a refrigerator or something like that. It's, it's the unknown of turning down the street and seeing, you know, all this stuff.
Oh my goodness, we need another dump truck.
Well, and something.
Or we gotta bring a backhoe over, cause I listened to them on the radio and they're like, okay, we gotta.
I think it was two years ago, I had an appliance, I can't remember what it was, and it was rather interesting because when public works came to pick it up, there was some gentleman in a truck and a trailer that was kind of following around and he, can I have it? And he was recycling the stuff that relieved public works from having to.
Yeah, he's part of the.
That's what I've been wanting to say is that there are people who pick up scrap metal and they, they, they want to know where it is and they make like what, a nickel? Um, so what I was thinking is when we publicize this for people knowing, like, you know, the pickup is, let's say, first, we let them know the stuff has to be out maybe a couple nights before and then we promote scavenger night, where they go and they pick up, they go and look at their neighbors and house and see if they want it, or if you have your scrap haulers going.
We gotta wrap this up for tonight, cause we've got the platform. Let's bring, let's bring this back to next month's workday. We've got one unfinished business here and we got a late start. And, uh, I think, I've got, we've got some directions here. We'll, we'll try to work out an outline of what it is we've got here tonight and come back with, try to come back with other proposals for you guys to discuss in next month's workday. Respect for every planning commissioner's time, but you have the next part of the game. Walk, mind, guys, join us.
The trash. Well, that's great. I didn't even. I didn't even look at. Well, I, I didn't see that it needed to be. Cause it's not like. Oh, yeah.
All right, we're gonna, we're getting a little bit of a late start here and, uh, we're gonna call to order the joint meeting of the city council and the planning commission. And how about if we go around with, but maybe we can turn those lights back on for two more minutes, Michelle? Uh, let's go around the room real quick, cause not everybody knows each other. And, uh, like Mr. Morrison here is the newest planning commission, the other planning commissioners don't even know who he is. So, uh, Dave, why don't we start with you and let us know who you are?
Dave Bernstein, planning commission. What else you want?
It's good for now.
Joe Morrison, new planning commission.
Anna Stewart, planning commission.
Jay Rose Pepe, city council.
Beck Ashby, city council.
Phil King, planning commission, I just realized I have seniority.
Rob Patancio and the mayor.
C D Lucellic, city council.
Mark Canary, planning commission.
Fred Chang, council.
Charles Lawson, council.
Wonderful. All right, with that, uh, Mr. Bond, you wanna introduce our guests?
Yeah.
Michelle, dim the lights.
Uh, tonight, uh, we have Tom Beckwith with Beckwith Consulting, who we've hired to write our parks and recreation open space plan. And, um, he's passed out a PowerPoint presentation that will also be on the screen, we'll dim the lights in just a moment. And, and I forgot your last name, Jennifer.
Q Salas.
Q Salas, Jennifer Q Salas, um, also with Beckwith. And, um, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to introduce you to the comprehensive parks plan process, to find out what questions and concerns you have, and I think Tom will have, uh, more that he can elaborate on here shortly. And do, do we have a microphone for him?
So the down arrow, the next slide.
There's a laser pointer on there too.
Gotta remember not to walk off with a.
We'll be able to hear you, track you down.
Now, um, really the point of the PowerPoint is to show you the process, the steps that we will be taking as we do, as we update you, we call it pros plan, park, recreation and open space. I'm gonna use some examples from other plans just to show you what to expect, what it will look like, to get kind of a feel for. At the very end, we do have some, uh, Q and A we want from you about what your issues are, what you want this process to address, if you've got key issues you want this process to identify, or you've got projects or ideas. But during the, during the walk through the PowerPoint, stop me at any time if you have questions. That sound okay? The laser pointer is the very top one? There we go. Can you see that? Well, it might be easier if you follow along with the handout, make sure that you can see. In essence, these are the tasks, they're, they're six key tasks. They start really with a retreat, this is kind of a, a little bit of the retreat tonight to kind of get an idea what your issues and objectives are. Then it's to update your demographics and your inventories, just to update your goals and strategies, just to update your plan elements, I'll show you what those are, to develop an implementation program, to finance these, and finally to publish the comprehensive plan when it's done. Now, there's two documents, there's a standalone pros plan, we call it, and that's like any other plan that you produce, whether it's for transportation or utilities or anything else. And that plan is sent to the state recreation and conservation office to get yourself certified. But it also updates your parks element and your comp plan. And, and we will draft that, but then you will update it as you update your comp plan. These are the team members, you can see how they come and go, depends on what the key tasks are. The team that is working with me includes Jennifer, landscape architect, an architect, a civil engineer and a planner. We've done a lot of these studies, as you'll see from the examples. Then we have a, uh, this shows months, but what we really do is we take a calendar and set down what dates we need to meet with parks board, with you, with, with the public, and then we work against those calendar dates. Shown in here are some, uh, white circles, those are what we call milestone dates. So at the end of this updating process, we have some open houses. At the, we have a planning, design, shred or brainstorming session, we have open houses and surveys on that, we have open houses and surveys on the implementation program, and then of course, we end up with you. So it's those milestone dates that we'll put on a calendar over the year, and we like to put that up on your website so everybody can see what we're doing and what dates they can, can participate. So one of the key issues is. So one of the key issues is public participation. And what we've, uh, I'll show you a little bit more, uh, description of what each of these are as we go through, but what we really want to do is a combination of everything from surveys to open houses to focus groups, in some cases, go-to presentations, if there's groups in the city that don't come out for these kinds of things, we'll go to them, try to drop in on their kinds of scheduled events to get their, their reaction. And we want to go to them in the very beginning of the process, so we can understand, uh, what they would like the plan to do, but we also want some behavior from them. Are they using your facilities, or they're not? Are they using your programs or not? Or are they going somewhere else? And if so, who are they getting their programs or their activities from? We also want to know people who are not getting any kind of activity, particularly young adults. So one of the issues in the surveys is we will survey all residents, we will also try to survey if your schools are amendable, your school students, so we get some idea what their opinions are.
What do we do at the city limits?
We, if we do the surveys, we will identify, we'll ask them to identify where they're from, but we don't preclude anybody participating. Now, we will know once we're all done with the survey, what the percentage is and if there's differences, but no, it's, lots of times, people really don't know what the limits are. And when we do surveys, we put maps up and say which zone you live in, but it's still a approximate guess. Same thing with, we ask if you're a registered voter. Uh, and so some of the things that I think I've covered, do they use your programs? Why, if they do or don't? Their level of satisfaction, and do they have any particular desires? I can go backwards and not forwards. One of the other key issues we want to know is what are your operation and maintenance requirements? And more than that, what's the life cycle on your facilities? By life cycle, I mean that some of these facilities have very definite periods where they have to be repaired or replaced, roofs, uh, trails, parking lots, build exterior buildings and so on. So we don't want to just identify what you want to build or develop new, we want to identify what it takes to maintain, what your current assets are. So we take a look at what the ages on some of these things are, and then we forecast over the next 20 years, when are those major cycles gonna come due? And therefore, what's the potential cost that you need to start to set aside, so you can make sure you can take care of that. Now, if we do that systematically, sometimes we have the opportunity, like we did here in Bellevue, just try to collate a lot of things together. So you're doing all the asphalt lane of all your projects at one time, or you're doing all your roofs of all your buildings at one time. If that doesn't work, then you do everything on one site all at once, so you're not losing some efficiencies as you jump, jump around. But we found most often is, is that cities will identify what their, their desires are for new facilities in the future, and not a program what it takes to maintain what you've got. And oftentimes, that's a stumbling block when you ask the public to want to develop new facilities. Another issue we want to know is what are your demographics? Now, these examples are from Everett, and one of the issues in St. Louis County is where's their growth coming from? And it's not coming from birth, it's coming from migration, people moving into the county for jobs, or people moving up there really from other areas because of climate change. We have a lot of climate migrants that go north of Seattle, some of those communities. But in Everett, we wanted to know what's the projection between 2010 and 2040? If you can see the red bars, that's what they expect their age composition to be by 2040. And that has major implications on recreation, because this group does things differently than this group, and it also has implications on financing. This group votes, and this group has very definite propensities about what they will approve, what they will fund. And therefore, that translates into kinds of projects you identify, and the types of financial devices that you use to do that.
Do you have any thoughts?
There, I must have to stand further back. One of the other implications of that is what is the recreational implications? Now, we did a diary-based survey for Washington, Washington State's Recreation and Conservation Office, RCO, some years back, and over that period of time, 12 months, we asked 3,000 people throughout the state, tell us what you do, how long you do it, why you do it, where you do it. And then RCO's updated that in 2006, and updated it in 2012. And normally, they do that every six years, because every state, in order to get money from the feds for the land and water conservation park grants, has to have a state comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, and that has to demonstrate what demand is, is for those activities that want to fund. But our key issue is the differences here between people that participate and how often they do it. And in 2006, they did it by income, by age, by gender, and by ethnicity. You see the red bars, that's the average of the total population. But if you look within those groups, they're groups that very definitely participate more often in certain activities than others. So if your population is changing or is aging, you can expect that that's gonna affect your demand for recreational activities. Now, not only did we know, want to know what percent do these things, we want to know how often they did it. Again, the red bar, and you can see the volume of different activities. So for example, if we're looking at youth baseball or youth soccer, that's a very small segment of your population, but they may play and practice 20 or 30 times in a season, so it creates a huge volume, even though that's a small fraction of the population that's using it. If we look at, at your older age groups, they may hike on a trail, but they may only do it percent-wise, very small number of times, but there are much bigger portions of your population that has an stake in what you do. So one of the things we look at when we project is we take these things based on that demographic profile and project what the volume and the impact will be on your facilities over time. So we have some idea of how that will change to 2040 versus how it is for now. And some communities, the demand for athletic facilities has gone down, meaning soccer fields and baseball fields, and the demand for trails and dog parks and things which are more older age groups have an interest in. So you want to know what that is as you project your future requirements. Then we want to know public's ideas and proposals. These are the brainstorming sessions, or sometimes we call them charrettes, and we bring people in who have different interests, and that's the whole objective, we want to hear from trail people, arts people, swimming people, boffin people, dog people. And what we task them to do is to take a look at your facilities and then give us ideas about how they think things are working now, what things they propose they would like to have in the future plan. Now, sometimes they give us really great ideas, because they know the cities in some cases much better than we do. Some cases, they give us really stinky ideas. But the advantage of asking for those stinky ideas is if they are stinky, they will gradually stink their way off the page and nobody will want to do them. But they're identified early, so they're addressed properly, and they don't show up at the end of the process where somebody said, why didn't you look at the dog park in such and such a place? So we found this is very important, but it does have another implication. If you ask the public for an idea, you gotta show them what happened to it. You gotta show them that you looked at it, and maybe you did a feasibility, maybe it shows up in your plan, it's a great idea, or maybe it doesn't pan out to be financially feasible, there's another way of doing it. But it's vitally important for us to document and show what happened to it. Now, one of the other issues is what do you do? We may project all that demand, but then the question becomes, what do you do and what do others do? And on the left here is a decision chart, and I'm hoping that you're watching, you're looking at the pages here, which are a lot more clearer than this. But it takes you through the decision chart that says, is this something we want to do? If it is, okay, how are we gonna pay for it? How much are we gonna charge? If it's something that we think should be done, but we don't want to do it, who should do it? Identify somebody else in the community that should do it. And if so, do we want to help them? Do you want to sponsor them? Is there something we want to make sure that gets done? So it's not a question of trying to do everything, it's trying to manage not only your resources, but every other, other party or interested player to make sure that it's done somehow, but it isn't duplicated and doesn't get lost. And the decision tree down here, particularly in the bottom, of what you should charge or what you should recover for that, is a good sign, at least, that everybody's paying attention to what the bottom implications are. Now, while we did that, in Burien, we also said, okay, let's take a look at expedia.com. When you go on that site, what they say is, where do you want to go? They don't ask you what airline, they say, where do you want to go, and how much do you want to pay, and when do you want to do it? And then it sorts out the different airlines and different choices for you to decide what you want to do. Well, you can do the same thing, and increasingly, cities have, saying, what do you want to play today? And once you tell us what you want to play, we'll direct you over here to whoever does that activity. So if you want to swim, but the, the city doesn't have the pool, but the YMCA does, then you direct it to the YMCA. Now, that's important, because the public implicitly presumes you're in the recreation business, that the city does it all. And, and if you're not gonna do it all, and you use a decision tree that says somebody else is gonna do it instead, then you want some kind of directing tool to say, this is where it's gonna be, this is where it's provided. So it's important that you begin to direct the public to where this is, as much as it is to decide what you do and what's appropriate for your resources. Now, one of the issues that, that the state has, and you will too, is what's your level of service? And the level of service in park and recreation is the same thing you use for transportation, for utilities, and for everything else. But in the park and recreation business, kind of multifaceted. So one issue up in here, and this is RCO's scoring sheet, is what are your quantities? What's your ratio of tennis courts to the population, or playgrounds to the population, and so on? And that's probably one of the more dicey factors, because the issue isn't, you're not just looking at raw thousands of people, that there are different age groups and different assumptions in that thousand people, and you gotta be somewhat unique to that. I did a plan for Lake Oswego, Oregon, and they had more tennis courts per thousand people than anywhere in the world. And the question is, so maybe we don't need any more? And the question to Lake Oswego is, if we're willing to pay for it, you build it. And they did. But that's a decision locally about what you want to do. But it is important, not only to determine what that is for you, but sometimes comparison to make sure you're not missing something that maybe some other city has decided to do. The second issue is what's the quality of that facility? It's one issue to have lots of soccer fields, another question of whether they're safe to play on, or whether you could play during the season, or they're managed properly so that they're available. So the quality issue gets down to, does it really meet the need, other than it just being real estate? And the last issue is what's this dimensional or the access to it? So it's one thing to say you have plenty of playgrounds, but if the playgrounds are on the wrong side of the tracks, or on the wrong side of the freeway, then they're not really accessible. So that issue then might sometimes counterbound the other two, to say, well, they still need to be able to walk to it in a safe way, and it needs to be a quality, and there needs to be plenty of them, so they're not overcrowded or if there's gaps. But these criteria are self-imposed by you during this process. You can't bring in any quote industry or other city standards and say, that's what you should do. Yours is gonna be unique to you, unique to your preferences, and unique to your geography. Then they, that boils down into specific park projects. And what we find is most interesting, when we produce these plans, that everybody wants to go to the park they know, they want to know what's in it and what's gonna be done to it. So part of the outreach process is say, which parks are you using? Critique those for us. And part of that workshop is to say, here's some maps and the parks in and around you, critique them. Oftentimes, this, this, things can be very subtle. You have the entrances in the wrong place, they have to walk all the way around the boundaries to get in, why can't we have more access points? Sometimes they're a little bit more difficult. There's a dog park, but it's wet all year long. I'm not bringing Fido down to a wet, wet site, what can you do about it? Or you build a tennis court, but nobody ever comes. So is that really effective use? So part of the process is then boil it down and get it back into site and project and park-specific things, so that it's beginning to, to match what you want to achieve citywide, but it's also serving the people that use that facility and that live in and around Non-motorized trail projects. I know that your transportation plan lays out your bike routes, your on-road, uh, walkways and everything else, and what we're saying here is access to those parks and schools and other destinations has a recreational component as much as a transportation component. So we like to lay those in and see how they match up with where you're putting your parks, where you're putting your schools, where you're putting the natural areas, what kinds of environments they're going through, and what kind of users there are. And also in this particular issue, oftentimes, we'll have lots and lots of trails and trail potentials, but people aren't using them, even though they say they want trails. And that's to dig in the reasons why. We're finishing a plan in Puyallup, and they have a river, riverwalk trail along the river, but people are a little hesitant to use it during certain times, because they don't feel safe. They're in between vegetation, nobody can see them, even though on the other side of the vegetation are commercial and warehouse and office facilities. So one of the key issues is to open it up a little bit, so there's more visibility, and then all of a sudden, we see the volumes increase. So the same kind of issue applies here, critique what it is, where it is, and who is using Community center projects, uh, and I'm, we're gonna get to, I have some questions on your community center, but the key issue here is who are they for and how are they designed? There are senior centers, teen centers, art centers, rec centers, community centers, health centers, so on. The key issue is what your needs are that match what else is already available here, because you do have some of those facilities, and then determine what's missing, and then where's the proper place to put it. Increasingly, the emphasis is ongoing multi-generational, because if you tag them for a certain age group, they become kind of niched and branded, and it's very difficult to get some other age group to use them, and to go to what we'll be calling very flexible spaces. So for example, in Centralia, they're called the hub. It's basically a Costco-looking building, but inside it can have four ball fields, or 10 tennis courts, or 12 volleyball courts, or an assembly, or a wedding, or a festival, or convention. The idea being, it's just a space. Make it as flexible and usable as you can, so it meets different interests. You can do that on smaller scales, but that's the objective. Figure out what it is, and then provide a space to make it as flexible as you can for different users at different times. In Puyallup, one of the issues is in the downtown area where we're expecting to do a lot of new mixed-use, higher-density development, we're gonna have seniors, but all the kids are there because the schools are there. So we expect during the daytime, there'll be an adult component in that facility, juice bars and coffee bars and fitness, and the minute school's out, there'll be a different crowd, and they need to interact, and then as it goes into the evening, probably more youth-oriented. So we've got to design that facility and the programs to adapt between those different Art centers. It used to be the definition of recreation was athletics, then it became trails, then it became indoor facilities, and now the definition is everything that's not work. Then if you work for Microsoft, they consider that leisure. So it's really multifaceted, and arts is becoming a major component, not only to look at it, but to do it. And we find that the art workshops and the art centers, particularly for example in Burien, they're have a, they have their own art workshop facility, that there's a big huge interest in that. And with youth, art gets even more digital, more electronic, more movie-making, more video-making, and those need to be major things to look at as components of what you know, you build, but maybe what you program. Placemaking activities. What we're trying to point out here is one thing to build it, and another thing to fill it. And what fills it are activities, whether it's farmer's markets, movies in the park, concerts in the park, or those kinds of activities. It's not successful if you just build it and make it look good, if people don't use it. Now, for example, this is from, uh, back downtown Bend, this is the back of the commercial center, this is their parking lot that looks out over their pond, and that has become the most active space in the city almost every weekend, because there's either a farmer's market, or a concert, or some activity in it. So it really is effective use of a very cheap space, but it's the activities that make it work, not the physical improvement. Green, one of the things that really chews up Parks and Recreation budgets are maintenance. So one of the issues is to move away from ornamentals and things that require irrigation or take a lot of, of handwork, move to the things that are more drought-resistant, more natural materials, that manage stormwater differently and so on, so that you've reduced that cost of just maintaining it. These are where the open houses are. As I said, some cases, we'll stage them, we find that it's more effective if we do pop-ups, if you have community festivals, community, community events, we'll put up a tent, we'll have some surveys, we'll have some exhibits, and in some cases, as we say, the go-to presentations for people who will not come otherwise, we go to them. But we need their reaction, and the key issue when we show up here is that, is that they can mark it up. It's not done, it's not done till they've had a chance to participate. And the reason are there what we call left brain and right brain. Left brain people like the process, they show up in the beginning, they have ideas, they're process-oriented. they're process-oriented. But right-brainers have to see it first. When they see an idea, then they're engaged, then they have ideas, and they want to be heard from. So this is right-brain interaction. When they have something they can look at, we want them to have the opportunity to mark it up. It's not done until they're also on board with what their ideas are. Now, one of the other issues is financial constraints. And what are we going to do about that? This is from the Admin Strategic Action Plan. These were their projected costs over the next 20 years for all services the city is providing. This is their expected revenues as a result of the 1% cap, and a result of lids on what some of the property levies were, and on lids of all their junior taxing districts combined. So the key issue is, how do we match what we want to do with what some of our financial constraints are? Do we need new innovative tools, or do we need better ways or more people participating in how we finance it? So some of the things we look at are the general fund. We look at expenditures in the Parks Department and how it's allocated. And we do look at what comparable costs are for maintaining similar facilities in other cities. But then, we look at some of the project financing options. These are projects, not programs. You can see all these different examples in the cities that we've used them just as an example. Now, that doesn't mean that the only thing Pierce County did was conservation futures. They also looked at all these other things to determine what was most appropriate for them. So we will be doing the same thing for you, to be a more comprehensive strategy in what you look at and how you finance it. One of the most important things that we've developed recently is the lease-to-own option. And the lease-to-own, particularly 6320, the legislature does not consider debt. They don't consider debt, meaning it doesn't have to be voted upon. The market considers it debt, because you're still paying some money monthly or annually for it. But it is a way we're financing city halls, sewer treatment plants, infrastructure projects, roads, and so on, as a way of providing an alternative way of managing finances. Now, one advantage of doing that, one particular device, is the 6320 that allows a nonprofit to be created to own it. They can issue their own bonds on it. That 6320 is an IRS provision that allows them to do that. The advantage then is, really, it's no different than a bond, it's public money. And the other advantage is, because it's lease-to-own, your terms can be as variable as you need to match your ability or your time schedules. So sometimes we've had them 30 or 40 years. Sometimes we've had balloon payments, sometimes we've had adjusted rates to fit whatever it turns out to be. Now, they own it until you've basically reached the end of the agreement. And one thing with the nonprofits is because they're going to own it for a long time, they lack good facilities. So when nonprofits have been involved, there's more green and LED buildings than any other one, because it's their facility. And we are a pioneer in this state for this, because the Economic Development Council is based in Seattle, and they're one of the biggest proponents of the 6320 nonprofit. Now, this is an example from Everett. And what we did up here in the very top is proposed expenditures. So we had what it would take for them to operate, based on projections of what we thought their staffing should be, the programs they offered over the future. This is what the repair and renovation requirement was, once we did the life cycle analysis. And these are the proposed additions that they wanted to do to develop existing facilities, acquire and develop new ones. Now, these were what they wanted to do. The difference here was three different ways of paying for it. So we looked at changing their general funds, charging more for recreational programs. We looked at using REIT, impact fees, and property tax levies. And the only difference is, we balanced these three, they all came up to that same number, but they were balanced differently between those elements. And then we put all of that on a voter survey, and asked every voter household in the city what their priorities were for these different projects, and how much they were willing to pay or use of these different potential methods. How much if we charged an impact fee? What percent should be charged? Was it going to be a levy or bond? What they were willing to spend per year to achieve some of the things that they wanted to achieve? And we balanced what they told us with what this could be. So when we went to council, we had some idea that there was a sustainable financial strategy as well as a supportable implementation program. And we like to take three, because we know council members like to have choices. And we like to take voter results, so that you have some sense of what they're telling you, as opposed to what advocates or an interest group may come up with during the process.
Everybody always chooses more taxes, though, right?
No. One of the key issues when we do the surveys is to say, if this is what you want, you've got to be prepared to pay for it. And if you give us a number that's lower than what you want, then we're going to have to reduce it. And as long as it's explicit in that survey, people are pretty accurate with what they want to do. This is the voter survey. What we found, we've done over 150 surveys. There's a survey for every project we do. And we find that's important to do it in two phases, the beginning to get ideas of what their issues and behaviors are, but at the end, to test proposals and financing strategies. We used to do telephone surveys until it became very difficult to do that with landlines and blocking and so on, became really unreliable. So what we do now is we use the postal service's Every Door Direct Mail option. So everybody gets a postcard. The design to be very visible is from the city, says, we want you to come online and take our survey. We want you to know what you want to do and how much you're willing to pay for. We find if we use those two key issues, what are your desires, and what are you willing to pay for, we get a pretty broad spectrum of participants. Now, we also put in there that if you don't want to do it online, here's a phone number to call, and we'll mail it to you. Or, and sometimes we've had multiple versions of the online survey in different languages, so we make sure that we have outreach. What we find, speaking as a statistician, it's not representative of your population in total, because people self-select to decide to participate. But it is representative of the people who will turn out to vote for something, pro or con. So in that sense, it's very reliable. Of course, adopt and implement. You can always see how excited they are when we get there. Now, Q and A. We want to know, since we gave you kind of an overview of what the process may entail, we want to know what you want us to know. We want to know what your questions are, and what your issues are, that we should be addressing as we come back in progress sessions. What do you want to know?
I have a couple of questions. There are some recreational activities that are almost yourselves an economic development tool. I have a granddaughter that plays softball, and we've gone to many tournaments in different cities where I know I spend a ton of money just beating. If something like that were of interest, do you also look at, are there supporting services that can support that kind of activity? Use hotels as an example. If you're going to bring in some tournaments, a softball complex, you need places for people to stay. If you don't have hotels to support that, you're lacking in one area. Is that something that you guys consider, or?
Yes. Pierce County established what they call the Sports Commission. And the whole purpose of the Sports Commission, it's a part of their tourism promotion area, is to bring in tournaments and other athletic events into the different cities, especially for that multiplier impact. And their challenge is finding the fields that match motels and restaurants and so on. And sometimes, in order to do that, they combine multiple sites, and then host the main event in a place that has those kinds of facilities. In other cases, we did this ourselves down in Centralia, Fort Boris Park. We found was the collection center from Vancouver, Portland, and from Seattle. People like to come and participate there. So the issue was RV park. Can you park your RV, or your tent, or whatever, in the area in and around those ball fields and capture it as well? Now, the RV tent multiplier is not as high as motel restaurant multiplier. But yeah, that certainly is an issue to look at. Now, in the case of Pierce County Sports Commission, they use lodging taxes to offset that, because they consider it tourism. But then, if you do that, you've got to be able to demonstrate that you're actually going to create that tourist dollar to recover it.
Which raises another question, some of these recreational improvements, if, using that as an example, that's a legitimate use for lodging tax dollars to develop those kinds of facilities?
Well, one of the things, it's very difficult, really, in the big picture, to take parks out of economics. People come to live in an area for two reasons. And increasingly on the West Coast, they come and live, and then they look for a job. They come for the schools, and they come for the parks. So if you're going to attract people, you do need a good quality in both of those areas. And indirectly, you've got to be able to finance those in order to recover what that brings. Now, the park impact fees is one way of recovering it from new development. But the lodging tax is another way of recovering it from the occasional user who drifts in and out of your system. So if you develop this community center exhibition, the center on the waterfront, that's tourism. Even though locals would use it as much as out-of-town people, because there'd be a local expenditure. So yeah, economics is a big issue. Now, there's certain things you just can't recover, trails. But trails, we find, are as much a driver to get people to come there. What we found is, we use lodging taxes for the wayfinding signage on the trails, and for some of the trails amenities. But yeah, that's a component.
Another question I have is, we are developing certain projects. You mentioned that community centers, one aspect of our waterfront walkway is another. It would be, I think, interesting to hear the community's thoughts of what more could we do using the community center? What should we use that facility for? Using a pedestrian path is another. Are there amenities along that path that the community would like to see? Years and years ago, we did a parks plan update where it was loud and clear they wanted more access to the saltwater area. So having, what we developed, if we develop it with observation platforms, or fishing piers, or just up way down at the beach, it would be nice to hear that from the community that that's in fact what they're interested in, otherwise, we just do a path.
I think there's two things that we use in our outreach to measure that. One is the brainstorming sessions, where you say, draw it for us, tell us where it should be, you know, mark up the map, and critique what exists now and you think could be better. And the second one, we do the voter survey, and we do it online, is heavily graphic. It's one thing to say, would you like the trail if it had more viewpoints? It's another thing to say, here's a proposal that has viewpoints, critique it, because then they're into it. So that's vitally important, because if it's too abstract, people can't measure it, and their first reaction is to pass. And then you don't get good information.
Right. The other, from my perspective, that would be interesting to know from the community at large, is there's opportunities for cooperative development. You know, the school district has a swimming pool that the whole community uses. Maybe there's other opportunities down the road where we could do something with the schools that could benefit both the schools as well as the community. So it'd be interesting to hear those kinds of thoughts, or ask you folks out there.
We did a master plan process for Bellevue and Bellevue School District. And they had a number of middle school park sites side by side. And one of their issues was, how could we better utilize both resources? And one thing that we found is, if we upgraded the fields on the park side to where they were competitive for the school games, the schools didn't need as many fields. And we found that on the school side, if we added more interior gym space, the city didn't need more community centers. And of the agreement that they worked out for their master plan for four different sites, in this state, the schools are limited about how many facilities they can put on their property, and how far they can take them as considered above standard. But if the city builds them on their property, or another party builds them on their property, it's not subject to the same restriction. So we were able to get a much more intensive utilization of those properties than each one of them did them by themselves. Now, on the same line, Bellevue was building community centers, and they're finding that the problem wasn't building them, it was operating them and maintaining them and programming them. So the last community center they built, the Boys and Girls Club, is the operational agent. And that saves the Boys and Girls Club, because they don't have to be in the capital business. So I think that's the kind of synergies that make your investment much more productive.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Just because, well, I have several, but this is in relationship to what you're talking about right now. Because John had mentioned the schools, because the schools have facilities. Do you inventory the facilities of our partners when you're inventorying the city's facilities?
There are two ways of measuring quote level of service, what you provide and what the whole listening picture is. So if we pull everybody's facilities together and look at that big picture, you may find there are some things you just don't need, you've got plenty of players for. But if we look at the big picture of what everybody's providing, and we find gaps, then the issue is, who's going to do it?
Yes. My question was, do you look at our partners' facilities?
Yes. We evaluate all their facilities, hopefully with their cooperation.
Okay. Then I'll ask my other question, because mine was, one of my issues was maximizing all of the facilities, because the taxpayers have limited dollars, and so we need to be able to share these things. And again, to piggyback kind of with what John was saying, John was saying that he has grandchildren that play in tournaments. I don't know if they're soccer, softball, they go out and play. We have a very lovely facility here in town that, when my children were of that age, were highly used. And I believe that the grassroots of particularly baseball isn't as active as it used to be. I believe that there are more players, more participants on these traveling teams. So I want to make sure that the facility that we have here in town is being used to the maximum, because I'm not sure it is now. And I see it, there was a time when they were playing baseball games up there seven days a week, from 10:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night. And now you can go up there, and some of the fields aren't used, you know, at all during the week. So we need to figure out how to maximize, again, the use of those for our general public.
We did two detailed studies, one for Bellevue and one for Mercer Island, they're called Athletic Field Analysis. And the key issue, first off, is who plays? How long do they play? How many practices they need? What percent of home games? How much rain out they get, and so on. And the other issue is, what's the capacity of all the available facilities? Were they available? And what we found, the biggest problem in both cases is, one, scheduling. For Mercer Island, there wasn't one central scheduler that took all the fields into account. And the second was, kind of grandfathered inheritance privilege, where somebody had been practicing there forever, and they kind of quote owned the field, and then nobody else could use it. But once we figured out what the proper number of hours to play, when you play, the schedules and so on, we found we had plenty of capacity, but it just wasn't being made available. And that was the key question.
And I'll pile onto that one in a second here. But I'm encouraged that we're going to at least ask the question about parks and rent, and whether our community is ready for that. We've added some phenomenal facilities, I think, in the last couple of years, McCormick Village Park, and the splash pad out there, this Rockwell Park. But, you know, we don't have a maintenance program. I mean, our Public Works Department is doing it, and, you know, it's important to keep these facilities nice and functional. So I'm very encouraged that we're going to ask that question. I guess I'll jump to Little League and then the community center. So there is a dynamic, and matter of fact, those leases are coming up, and we have two groups, Little League, which is just baseball, Pee-wee's is football, and maybe even soccer. I'm not sure Pee-wee's does soccer. And they don't get along well. And I too, like that, want to make sure, those are, you know, assets that we need to make sure we're maximizing the use of those for all of our community, not just a few. And...
Particularly as we densify.
Yeah. And make sure that if those are the best uses, that how do we, I guess, get these folks to get along?
I wouldn't guarantee that they're going to get along.
They never have, so.
But I think the question is equity between them. And then the other is being prepared for trade-offs. So one of the issues when we did these analyses is there'd be plenty of prime for practice, but you're not going to take the competition field on Sunday to do your practices. You're going to have to practice somewhere else during the week. Or if you have a younger age soccer group, you can use an unimproved school field. You don't have to be on the competition field. So as long as everybody knows that they're going to be treated the same and also that they're going to have to make trade-offs, you're more likely to get their cooperation. But there's a call dividing conquer. They've got to come to the table and be willing to, as a group, to do that. And the other issue is scheduling. If you look at a year's time, some of their schedules overlap at the time when they wanted to begin to practice for their season. And then that's try to figure out how you handle that overlap time.
And then diving into the community center, it's part, the proposed community center, we've got public facilities district commitment for about $12 million. It's proposed here on the waterfront and there's a little diet picture of their, a graphic layer wall of it. And it's probably a 25,000 or 30,000 square foot facility, similar to what is up in Kingston for Village Greens, some of it. I've been there, some of, I'm going to take some of the council members up there soon and the planning commissioners want to go, I'd love to take you to. And in Kingston, it's a, so based on what our needs are, we know we need a new library and that's part of, that's about a third of it up in Kingston. And so we need about 10,000 square feet for a new library. And we have a corporate partner in this, for this master plan project, that for them to bring their jobs and their corporate campus to us, they're saying we need meeting and banquet space to fulfill their needs. So that is a commercial kitchen and flexible meeting rooms. And Kingston has a very good example of that, too. In Kingston, that last third is the Boys and Girls Club. I'm not sure that's the right use for our waterfront and that's, I'm hopeful that this process can engage our community to find, is it the arts? Is it senior activities? I don't know. And I think, for me anyway, that's a blank slate and I want to hear from our community because it's probably going to take a Parks and Recs levy to help us pay for this. And I need mine from the community to tell us what it is.
To support it.
You know, what it is they want.
Two issues usually come up when we look at those kinds of facilities. One is, what's appropriate use? Not only does what the public want to do in that facility, but who will do it? And that means outreach to some of the groups who would rent the facility, some of the groups who would maybe be concessions on the facility, some of the people that might teach in the commercial kitchens and so on. And the second part of it is, what's your revenue stream? The bulk of those users are going to be nonprofits. And nonprofits, you know, they can't afford much as far as market rate. So usually the revenue structure is to figure out the prime times for market rate users and the off times for nonprofit users so that they realize a discount means you're not entering the peak times. And then to determine whether there's enough volume in each of those activities to generate a revenue. That's pro forma. Those are the pro forma analysis we usually do. And the other key question is, at what point in time will you build up enough demand that you break even? And how long can you go in your worst-case scenario that you're offsetting that till you break even? Now, it's important to be realistic. One of the people that works for me on these kinds of teams is an economist based in Vancouver. And he went in and did the postmortem on the Winatchee quote ice hockey rink. And the problem was, it was unrealistic demands that they presumed for and an unrealistic operating structure. And of course, it just, the hockey team didn't come. And so then they had a facility they couldn't fill, couldn't operate, couldn't keep open for other activities, and they just sank into the hole. So the whole point of pro forma is to be bluntly realistic, pessimistic. So you know just exactly what you're getting into and that you're prepared for any of those shortfalls.
Thank you.
I guess I would add that, you know, the situation, and I don't know the details of Winatchee other than the problem, but, you know, if you build something with a specific use, you're limiting your specific users. Whereas you make something that has multiple opportunities, you know, just in the field, we've got V and Z up there that supports baseball, soccer, disc golf, I don't know if they're still doing that up there, a number of other activities, all in one facility. So not that that's generating any revenue, but it's being used by more of the baseball team.
I think the advantage that we've learned from our approach is that people will tell you the desires, but it's important to tell them the financial consequences of those choices. And it's like the tennis on Lake Oswego. If they want it and they still weren't willing to pay for it, go for it. But if they want it and then you show them what the pro forma sheets would look like and they say, "Well, I don't want to do that," then they have to be prepared to say, "Well, I've got to back away from what's maybe an unfathomable dream." And so part of this process is to put those, is we don't recommend, what we say is, "Here's your choices. Tell council where you want to sit, but be blunt about it." So our surveys are very explicit about the costs and about the consequences and so on because we find that gives you really useful information and that's what makes your plan successful.
I just.
Well, I was going to say, we actually had that happen with a YMCA that was being proposed or asked about, a study. And people really wanted the facility, but when the cost was broken down, people did not want to pay that price.
Actually, well, that wasn't the scenario. So we had surveyed them and actually went and seeked into their model. And when, so, and I recently had meetings with them. So we had a needs, we funded it six years ago, a needs study. And it shows that there's a need that our community can. YMCA's model, historically with Silverdale, Piala, Get Harbor, was you fundraise, they're about $30 million for a YMCA facility. And you fundraise half of it and they'll pay for the other half in bonded indebtedness from the user piece. And right when I took office, that survey was completed. And one of the first meetings I had was at the Y. I said, "Well, we've got this need study, let's get going." The fire chief was willing to step forward and raise, to start the capital campaign. "Well, we're lent up right now. We're not doing that model, but if you raise 100%, we'll build a Y for you."
If you raise 100%, I'll build it for you.
About two weeks ago, I've had, since then, they're about, if we got in the queue today, they're five years out and they're willing to entertain that model. So it's, yeah, they got hold of it, not our community.
So that was the survey that you're looking?
Yes.
And do you have this?
Yes. This is our city and the county funded.
I think the old model used to be, is there a need? What does it cost? Let's go do a bond. And what I'm saying is, collapse those all and do them simultaneously. What's your need matched with what the cost is? So this mix and match, we get down to what you're willing to pay versus what you can afford for need. And if you want more than that, then you look at other phases or other partners. But do them concurrently because if you try to break them into phases, you're going to be disappointed. And it's going to take a long time. You can do it much faster than that. Plus, I think what we're saying with lease to own and some of these other financial devices, there's other ways of doing it now. Don't just look at this old bond model. In fact, we haven't done a bond for a public facility in 10 years. We've done lease to own. There may be 50 projects in this state that have been done lease to own in the last 10 years. Very few bonds. If you're going for a bond, you go for police or fire or jail, but you don't go for anything other than that.
No, I just had a comment, probably more than a question, that's public outreach because apathetic is not a word, but sometimes beating the bushes. And the correct way to beat the bush is to get that information out can sometimes be problematic in this area.
And your city?
No, Jerry's here every week, but Jerry's the only one here every week.
And I don't think it's apathy. I think that people are really torn in a lot of different directions. And there's that apathy to it until there's an issue. But trying to get that, and that's why it's more of a statement than it is a question.
One of the reasons we use so many different methods, all through the process at different times, is one, there are different people you're reaching. But then you have to design the tool that you're using at the time and the process where you want to find out specific information. So in the beginning of the process, where I say we send a postcard to every household and what are you doing, write things, how we're going. And we also do a $250 drawing of, lottery drawing of everybody that turns it in, an incentive. And also good for publicity. You'll get a good assessment of what people think is working. But later in the process, when you're going out and you're going again to them and you're going specific proposals, you're talking money, one way or another. And that brings out a bigger audience and an audience that will show up at the referendums and the opportunity there is to evaluate how well you'll do and adjust your strategies or adjust your plans on what you hear. For example, we did a park plan in Blaine and this is quite a while ago, and what they said, the two highest priorities is you want to conserve historical areas and natural areas. And we came up with this one historic farm that had a lot of woods on it and we put it on the survey at the time, we didn't have as much capability as we have now. And it just sank, just sank like a stone. And we said, "How come this thing stink?" And they said, "Well, Joe owns that property and nobody likes Joe." So the point is, but we polled that project before the plan was done, before it went to council because we knew it would just sink everything else in the project. So the point is, figure out where there's support, go with where there's support, don't fall on your sword on things which their time has not come or we haven't quite hit the right button. So part of the outreach, that's why it's so important for the outreach all during the process is, you're constantly measuring where the community is versus the ideas you put in front of them to make sure when you get at the end of the road, you're both in the same place. Does that make sense? We got to this process, I've been doing this a long time. I didn't learn this the first day. But we found that this model is very productive if we do it right.
Can I ask? I was just curious, a lot of our HOAs in private development apartments, et cetera, have recreational facilities that are required by code. Tot lots, tennis courts out at McCormick Woods, how do you figure those into level of service? And do we actually inventory those as part of the available facilities even though they're privately owned? And how does that factor into our overall level of service?
We inventory them and we assess what their quality is. And we also try to determine who can use them. HOA facilities are difficult. The better healed the community is, the better the condition they're in, the less likelihood you're going to inherit them down the road. But then the user base is very small. And they also tend oftentimes to be custom tailored to fit specific needs where there's tennis or swimming pool or golf. The risk is, if it's not as well-conceived, well-designed, and all of a sudden they show up in your door and say, the residents say, "The homeowners aren't taking care of it. Can you take over our park?" And then you find it's in the wrong place, it's not built to your standard, it doesn't meet your needs, and then what do you do? We did a plan for Monroe where they had been using homeowner association subdivision requirements and were inheriting a dozen parks a year that weren't being maintained. And then they found they didn't really meet their needs. So they revamped their subdivision regs to the point where they said, "If you're going to propose to do this in lieu of an impact fee, you'll build it to our standards, you'll put in it what we think citywide and neighborhood needs to be, and it's got to be publicly assessable." Now, it's a balancing act between what you require or do in lieu of a fee. And part of that is to take a look at what's happened so far and assess whether it's working or not and how to tweak it. And Monroe, based on that, they bad all homeowner association developer-associated parks. They went to the impact fee. And their impact fee, we ended up doing their impact analysis, $6,000 per single-family house to maintain what they had. And we tested the 6,000 on the voter survey about how much we should charge. One of the issues on the survey was, you can charge 10%, 25%, 75% or 100%. But anything less than 100%, the city's got to make up the balance. So how much should we charge? Well, the public said, "Charge 75%." So council charged 75%. They had the highest, for a while, they had the highest park impact fee. But developers were paying it because they didn't want the liability of building a facility in their project, which oftentimes wasn't appropriate anyway, and running the risk that it would fail.
So right now, it's in our subdivision code that they have these facilities, but then we charge an impact fee nominal, it is $800 on top of it.
Correct. And actually, I think it's, I don't believe it's in our subdivision code now that you have to do that. Some of the previous subdivisions we took from the county had requirements for parks. But it is required for apartment complexes that you provide those types of amenities. So we have some that came in from previous subdivisions, but we don't, we aren't getting new ones or requiring new ones. We're having the impact fee instead.
But the whole HOA is responsible for maintaining those, not us?
Correct. And there's a few that are in pretty bad shape, but mostly, most of them are in McCormick Woods and are well taken care of.
If it works, then stick with it. If it doesn't work, then we don't know how to do it. Probably the most interesting thing that we've encountered recently is we just finished a form-based code for the regional growth corridor for University Place. There's no room for more parks within that, their quote regional growth area. But they're expecting 10,000 to 20,000 people to live there within that zone within the next 10 years. And those are going to be empty nesters and millennials. So the question is, what kind of facilities are you going to provide? You're not going to put ball fields in that area. But the issue is incorporate them into the buildings. So if you've seen any advertisements for condos or apartments in Seattle, they're talking about the dog park on the roof, the park on the roof, you know, the barbecue grill on the roof, the fitness center on the ground floor, the plaza on the ground floor. So as you intensify and go more mixed use, then you want, need to begin to think about recreation as a corporate, integral part of that project. And what we were proposing there is you could offset the impact fee if those facilities were available for everybody within the zone, not just your occupants. Otherwise, you had to duplicate it. These are all ideas, but I think what we're trying to get across is, it's not just parks, it's an economic strategy, it's a vision strategy, it's a financial strategy. So this is probably one of the biggest drivers of your economic development when you really get down to it. And so it merits that kind of attention.
Splash, I mean, I think we did McCormick Village Park, the second phase, spot on. I mean, the usage that's getting that splash pad, we're going to $8,000 for the water month. I mean, let's replicate that somehow.
Right.
Down here downtown and, you know, we'll have people visiting our downtown in droves.
I would just like to compliment the presentation that you've done and that I very much appreciate your approach. I'm very much looking forward to the demographic information because we are expecting, Nick's going to have the numbers of the growth we're anticipating before 2040 or 2050 and what those demographics are going to look like. I think that's going to be important in helping us frame what recreational facilities we need because it's going to be different than what we may think right now. I know in my lifetime, as I just said, we used to spend a lot of time at the ball fields and now I spend a lot of time in our trails. So, you know, there really is a shift. And I really appreciate your approach and I'm looking forward to working with you and coming up with a good plan for the city.
Correct. Well, if you like this, we'll be back. Because we need progress sessions during it so you hear what we're coming up with and you have the opportunity to weigh in. Lots of times we want to hear what your questions are, what we want to look at as we keep moving forward.
Do you have a current view of where we're at before they even start their serving? What resources, what assets we have, wherever they are?
Well, land that we have, we have enough, we have, we built two phases of McCormick Village Park. We have land for a third phase. When I first came into office, I proposed two parks on the waterfront. We built one of the two. One, we bought the piece of property next to the hotel and built the Rockwell Park. I think there's an opportunity to cut up some commuter parking next to the Marina Park and add open space there and let transit, build us a parking right lot somewhere and get the commuters off our waterfront, some of the commuters off our waterfront. I think we have a, we have a, an opportunity in what I'm calling the Flat Flower Meadows area. We've got Sydney South. We hear a lot of complaints about substandard sidewalks and, and road out there. But the, the thing that's preventing us from fixing the roads and the sidewalks is stormwater improvements. And I think the county's got some good examples of park, stormwater facilities that are parks. And we've got a very substandard park not located in the right place, I believe in Paul Powers Park. And that community deserves a park. And I think they will, would be receptive to that idea. And I think there's an opportunity to, to marry a stormwater facility to a 20, 25 acre park out near Blackjack Creek at the end of that. And with the community center and we have the next phase of the pathway coming that, that is funded, taking us to Whiskey Gulch. And we have a, a study, dollars for a study next year, Mark? Mark's over there.
Next year.
2022, two years from now, that, for Bay Street East. And so it'll take us from the ferry terminal along Waterway here, up the boulevard and tie into Tremont. So with that design, we would have a pathway from the easterly end of the city all the way out Tremont, the freeway.
But the goal on that is to end up at McCormick Woods Park. So that you can go from the McCormick Woods Village Park to Annapolis.
So those are some of the opportunities that we have that are in ideas or we have land or concepts for.
But there are also some other small things. I mean, there's one that's like a postage size. Post stamp size, the one that was up on the hillside that none of us knew about, which, for example.
Oh, the Mitchell. Yeah, I mean, we didn't even know that existed, that it was ours.
Oh, for the benches?
Yeah.
Oh, I knew, was there?
You didn't tell us.
But we have a relatively good list of all those.
Yeah, I think we've got a pretty good inventory these days.
There's a few holes in the existing park plan where facilities we own aren't in there. But for the most part, our existing document explains what we have. It just doesn't explain where we're going and what our levels of service need to be. And our, our financial picture is, is really foggy.
I think our parks are better shaped now than they've been in, in years. Part of that's the economy and having some money put into them. But, I mean, we've put quite a bit of money into Clayton Park. And the community service days have helped too. We've gotten a lot of volunteers to come out and help us spread the topsoil and seed and cut vegetation. For today, other planning commissioners, you guys have kind of what? They don't bite.
I have a solution to your condo developers. You were saying they put the dog park on the roof and the exercise down to me. They should put the exercise up close to the dog park and just have the elevator stop two floors before you get to the dog park.
Walk up.
One, one last comment. I was looking at demographics on Everett. It was really amazing the growth of the senior population.
Not only that, but it's ethnic, which is a whole different type of activity though. Ethnic meaning migrant, a lot of migrants.
I just had, I think it tied to what she said, maybe I missed the answer as far as public or, or state city and district joint ventures. Has that happened before? Where you do actually come together and, and you make your fields more accessible, usable, user friendly. And we already have lots of property. I can think of several properties around there, school, properties that are just basically unused, large fields. And I'm just wondering about that, if that's, if anything like that has, has happened before. Or if it's always a tug of war with, say, schools and city.
No. There's, there's always certain amount of issues to work out in any interlocal agreement, liability, scheduling, responsibility and so on. One of the first things we do are stakeholder focused groups, workshops in the very beginning. We may just talk to school people, YMCA people and so on and just say, tell us where you are. Tell us what we can do together. Let's make sure through the process that we're working together. Rather than show up at the end and say, hey, we got a great idea for your property. And if we, we build them into the process and they're as much a part of the process as you are, then the odds are that we're probably going to end up with some potential joint ventures. Sometimes it takes time. If they've never done it before, you're going to need some trials and some experiments. But it's, it's the model. It's the model for the future, for sure.
It seems like that might be a good community thing too, that people would see it as, okay, we're actually going to do something with that field that's been sitting there since I was in my teens and, and really has done nothing with it. And they would see that it's a, it's good for the city and it's also good for the schools at the same time.
Anna Cordes recently had a pool that's going to go out on a bond. The school is going to go out on a bond and they were going to create a.
Boys and girls club on bond. And the public said, why? And you asked them, just for three bonds, why don't you guys get together and come up with one facility? And within two months, they came up with a joint facility and one bond. I mean, the political priorities were cooperating.
And I think we have more needs. We always have more needs and resources. And back to Dave's comment too, and the meeting I had recently with, with the YMCA folks. McCormick Communities is, was going, has planned to build their own community center out there. They would be receptive to the idea of donating the land and letting someone build a facility, whether it's the Y or something we don't know about yet too. Because they, they, otherwise they're going to build something that's HOA funded. And they're receptive to the idea of something publicly funded.
The whole process is a register. The whole process is synergy. So we'll see where we end up. We want everybody planning at the same time to see just how.
I, I had another question about our parks impact fee when the time comes to consider adoption. I know that, I haven't been through the parks impact fee adoption process that was done before I arrived in the city. And I know when you do transportation fees, you can only use those, that money for building capacity into your system. You can't fix deficiencies in your existing facilities with it. So you can't do maintenance or, or other things. Are, are parks similarly limited to capacity projects? Or is there some aspect of operating some kind of parks program that is in, is in essence a capacity?
They have the same capacity issue, but capacity can be measured a couple of different ways. If you build a new field, that's increasing capacity. But if you lighten existing field, you can also increase the capacity. So it's how you measure. The other, the issue with the impact fees is it's deficit funding if you're not careful because whatever you agree to raise the massive, the impact fee, you're obligated for. Both did that and then Bothell didn't come through and the residents sued Bothell or the developers sued Bothell. And Bothell had to put, pony up the money back to the developer. Plus, the residents with, with the project was proposed were irate because it never materialized. The other issue is to keep it as simple as possible. Only have one zone for the whole city. And then when they first came out, you know, we created neighborhood zones and community zones and regional zones. Then we were never generating enough for our neighborhood facility. And then we sit in the back and six years you had to give it up. So the whole idea is to be administratively as simple as possible if that's the direction we go.
Well, I can see where the challenge with impact fees is that it provides you capital funds, but doesn't provide cooperative funds. So you built it, you got to figure out how to maintain it. Can you speak to, and I know just enough to be dangerous about metropolitan park districts, how that works?
Very.
Is that, is that an option?
One of the, one of the devices which has become increasingly popular, metropolitan park districts. And, and the most politically acceptable form of that is if they're, if they correspond to your city limits and if your city council are, are the commission members. And Seattle just did that when they created the parks, they took parks, or put a metropolitan park district, junior tax district. And council members remained the elected officials. And they found that that was more acceptable to the public than a standalone with a whole new set of elected officials and a whole separate budgetary process. But essentially what they're using that for is operating money. Another thing that Seattle did, and we've done this on housing, affordable housing projects, is they went out on a first seven year levy and said, we need money to, to maintain. We've fallen behind on maintaining our parks. We've got parks we've never really completed. Need to complete them. And we also need to acquire some new property for areas where we're growing. We want to say, we want to reset the levy bit to where we can generate $20 million and project maybe seven years. But the minute we get to the $20 million, we'll revert back with property taxes now. But here's where we're going to spend the money, the past. So they went out for another one after seven years. In fact, Gellingham is doing an open space and trails. We're on their fourth pretty much there with the same kind of approach. And the other issue is you have the levy that's approved, you can capitalize that. So you can take that capital money and spend all of it initially to give the best return on what you've earned best. So those devices, we find there's more public acceptance, they call the bond and we're going to call it general revenue. So because they're, they're keyed to a specific need, they can see exactly what it is they're going to get for that need. And it's going to go away once that need is satisfied. And those are more seldom, politically seldom ways than the old traditional bond.
Metropolitan Parks District can operate facilities as well. So, not that I'm advocating, but you know, the community center, there's an operator. One of the challenges that we have is we've got parks that are owned by others than the city. We've got the county park right in the middle of our city, for example. We've got the Parks District, whatever they are, that has a park right on the edge of London, which is a large kind of community parks. It's right, right on the edge of our city. So we have these facilities that are owned by multiple entities, all struggling to maintain. And we've got the community center. So I just don't know if Metropolitan Park District was even a part of it.
And actually, that park district failed, but the county took that back over. So it's County Park again. At Jackson.
Jacksonland.
Yeah. So it's just part of the park system again. Yeah. Do, do we consider, if we go that route, is there appetite within our community to take over the operation of some of those large county parks that are in our city?
Well, I'm just looking at it from, is this, is this an option that could be on the table?
Jacksonland and.
Redcell.
Redcell.
Right. They're not in the city. They're in the UGA.
Redcell is in the city.
Redcell's in the city, but UGA.
The hardest if, with a 1% implementation, county parks departments. And a lot of them have gone away. King County doesn't have a parks department anymore. And what they found that they have money for capital improvements, but not operation and maintenance. And vice versa. And Hual, next to Rogers High School was Heritage Recreation Center. It's on school district, but the county operates the programs. And then there are examples of vice versa where the county owns the property and then some other party develops and operates it. And so you're all in the same financial straits. So there's an incentive for all of you at least to take a look at what some of those.
Yeah, that's a big thing about, you know, Parks Department, there's a need, but there's a funding. And, you know, I don't think we're going to get people that are going to work for you, so. But if you had like a metropolitan parks district that had a funding source.
It, it is one device, but there's no silver bullet.
Oh, I, I agree.
The whole issue is to figure out what appropriate, what everybody's agreeable to and what is the most appropriate thing for each and every project. And it may be different. I can, I could give you, you know, more examples of some I've indicated tonight. Probably 90% of them have a technique where everybody's committed to it. 10% don't work when they're either not committed or they didn't do no homework or when actually they were.
I guess one quick comment, as a representative of the Public Works Department, I'm hoping that one of the outcomes of this process will be some sort of a bright line. I don't know what that bright line is going to be, but, you know, the city has operated the way they've operated with their parks and facilities as a function of the Public Works Department. But I'm hoping there'll be, again, I don't know what the bright line will be, but some established bright line that will come to that says, we can get to this point with what we're doing. But to get to the next level of providing opportunities and service, at that point, we need to consider some sort of formalized parks and recreation that is doing more than just ultimately, at the beginning, it's maintenance of both parks and facilities. But ultimately getting us to, you know, what I experienced over the last two decades with basketball and fast pitch tournaments where, you know, I'm being very aware of how the fields are getting watered down between, you know, who's operating what? Is it city employees? Is it some other park commission? You know, how do we get to that level, which as John mentioned earlier, now you're starting to look at, now you have hotels and you have restaurants and you have support facilities. But are we going to be able to establish some sort of bright line that says, we're not here yet, we'll continue with status quo, but now we venture into this next world of, you know, parks and recreation?
The, the critical mass is programs. And as Public Works Department, you can build it and maintain it if you're everything physical. But the minute you move into program, then there's another skill set. And then either then if you're doing it internally, that becomes a park and rec department. Or if you're contracting it to Boys and Girls Clubs or the school or somewhere else, you can stay off that operating for a while if you have, if you're, you're local agreements. So there's bright lines and bright locks depending on which direction you want to go. The most expensive thing you can do is program. It's different skills and then some of the programs are not going to recover their costs. You have to anticipate what that's going to be. And if you're doing it all internally rather than using vendors and other organizations to do it, that's going to be much more expensive than a synergistic approach. But I think this process is going to identify us.
And then $30,000 for you. Are you at month zero now? Are we hoping to wrap up in June?
We're going to be done in about 10 minutes. And this is the kickoff. We wanted this kickoff so we could lay us out what we think we should do, get your feedback and also know what your issues are. So when we come back and I come home and say, well, we started the service, we started this, you know what we're doing. But then you also know what you want to know from us. So you, we can get guidance on the next steps. So this is the kickoff.
Have you done what you need?
This is exactly what we wanted to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
So as I said, we'll be back. We'll be back. Anything we're going to, if we're going to come back the next time, we're going to need information before. So we said this purpose of experience.